We're going to call tonight's meeting to order. I'd like to begin with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Deputy Mayor and Councillor Andrews, all in favour? And that is carried. Was there any disclosures of direct or indirect pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, I will ask that you all rise. Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Taylor.
I sent the exact section to the clerk, and I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to tell you exactly what the line is. But there's a section in there where it talks about equipment for the Optimist Club of Orangeville, and they're asking for a grant. And I am a member of that club. And so when we get to that item or any voting, I'll have to have that taken out because it would be a conflict of interest for me to vote yea or nay on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So I will ask that everybody rise if they're able for the singing of the National Anthem, please. We would like to acknowledge the treaty lands and territory of the Williams Treaty Nations and the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation. We also recognize that Dufferin County is the traditional territory of the Wendat and the Haudenosaunee, and is home to many Indigenous people today. Tonight's meeting is being aired on public television and/or streamed live and may be taped for later public broadcast or webcast. Your name is part of the public record and will be included in the minutes of this meeting. Any member of the public connecting via telephone is reminded to press star six to mute and unmute. Please remain muted until the Chair requests comments or questions from the public. Our next section is the open forum. And because this is a special council meeting, council is only permitted to discuss the items for which this meeting was called. Therefore, all open forum comments for this meeting shall be restricted to the current agenda items. For those who are wishing to speak to council during open forum, you'll be provided with three minutes to present your information to council, provided you're either a resident, taxpayer, or service provider of Orangeville and have not spoken to council on this topic within the last three months. If there's someone connecting via telephone electronically, please use the raise hand feature or dial star nine to indicate your intention to speak. You will not have the ability to mute or unmute until you are recognized and called on by the Chair. I did just want to state that because we are doing a budget meeting and tonight is just the tabling of the budget, we will not be answering any questions about specific items within the budget. If you do have a question about them, you're welcome to ask them here tonight, and staff will take them away and bring them up, bring them back at the next appropriate budget meeting. We will answer questions if you do have a question about the process that we're following. So with that, I would turn it over. If there's anybody on open forum, really, and was there anybody online? Was there anybody in the gallery who wished to come forward? Okay, we just need your name and address for the record, Mr. Christo.
My name is Nick Christo. I live in number 20 Pollock Court, Orangeville, Ontario. Well, I don't have a question tonight, but I have a comment. Last year, between the county and the town, we got hit with over a 7% increase. So I would hope that tonight, you as a councillor, you're the mayor, deputy mayor, councillors, you will work, my understanding, from what I read on the paper, it'll be a 2%. I would hope that you work to 0%. Because I think the taxpayer of this town, they deserve it, and we gotta get it. I'm over $7,000 that I pay in taxes. And it's pretty tough for a senior guy, where I only get $10,000 a year. So I'll leave you with that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christo. Was there anybody else in the gallery who wished to ask a question or speak during open forum? Okay, thank you. Before we get into the presentation of the budget, I just need a motion from council to extend the presentation time limit for our treasurer, please. Can I have a motion to extend? Councillor McIntosh and Councillor Sherwood, all in favour? And that is carried. And before we get into the budget presentation and the subsequent process that follows, I really want to explain how things are a little bit different this year and why. I wrote some remarks, so I wouldn't forget anything. So bear with me here. When the province first assigned strong mayor powers to Orangeville earlier this year, I made a clear commitment that I would delegate every power that I'm legally able to delegate to preserve our democratic process and to ensure that every member of council continues to have an equal voice at this table. And that's exactly what I've done so far. There are, of course, some elements of the legislation that cannot be delegated. But wherever the law permits, those authorities have been returned to staff and to council so that our work continues to reflect Orangeville's longstanding collaborative approach. It's also really important to state, once again, that the town of Orangeville did not request these powers, nor do we want them. They were assigned to us by provincial legislation, and our responsibility is to follow the law while maintaining the transparency, teamwork, and accountability that our community expects. Under this new framework, I am required to present the proposed municipal budget, which is what's happening here tonight. The next step is that council may propose amendments, and the legislation does include a mayoral veto with a potential council override requiring two-thirds vote. So even with these new rules, though, I have worked hard to delegate and keep our process as familiar and collaborative as I could. So to do that, I issued a directive authorizing our treasurer and staff to prepare the budget on my behalf, which is exactly what has our staff have always done. Council then passed a resolution to shorten the amendment period. And I issued a mayoral decision to shorten the veto period so that it does stick to the similar process. Unfortunately, I can't get rid of the veto process altogether, though it does still exist within the legislation. These steps were taken to ensure that despite the legislative changes, our process still reflects Orangeville's values of democracy, professionalism, teamwork, and transparency. Tonight, staff will walk us through the proposed 2026 budget, which we've titled "Finishing What We Started and Investing in What Matters." Once tonight's presentation concludes, council's 10-day amendment window officially begins. We'll come back together on December 9th and 10th to review the budget in detail and to consider any proposed amendments. If there are no amendments brought forward by the end of the December 10th meeting, the budget is automatically adopted. So you will not see the vote that you typically see for an approval of the budget. If amendments are proposed, the legislation outlines the next steps, which is that I may exercise the veto if I choose to. Council then may override with a two-thirds vote, or I may issue a decision indicating that I will not use the veto. Once those steps are completed, the budget is deemed adopted, which will be sometime between December 10th and December 16th, hopefully, depending on how the process unfolds. And while these powers aren't something that we sought and we still don't want, I will be clear, we're applying them in a way that keeps Orangeville's longstanding collaborative approach intact. Our goal remains the same as always, which is to deliver a responsible, transparent budget that invests in the things that matter to the people of Orangeville. So that's what you'll see here tonight. So before the treasurer comes up, I'm going to turn the floor over to CAO Smith for his opening remarks.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Post. I appreciate that. Tonight, we start the final phase of our 2026 budget. For 2026, we are focused on reliable services today and readiness for tomorrow. The town's proposed budget reflects that balance, finishing what we've started and investing what matters. It keeps roads, sidewalks, drinking water, stormwater, and recreation safe and reliable while staying disciplined on costs. The creation of the budget did not happen in a vacuum. With strong collaboration with council throughout the year, common themes emerged. Taking a responsible approach to asset renewal and service levels was one theme. Properly maintaining something now instead of replacing it at a much higher cost in the future is responsible. Having plans in place and sticking to those plans is responsible. We can no longer push out problems into the future. Affordability was also top of mind. The proposed town-controlled property tax increase excluding police is proposed at less than 2%. At the same time, we are addressing our infrastructure backlog. Like a mortgage, the responsible path is a clear plan and consistent payments. By following our long-term financial strategies and asset management plan, we can renew the assets we rely on today while readying ourselves to be able to act on tomorrow's opportunities. Less than 10 cents of every tax dollar paid by Ontarians comes to local government. Yet we are responsible for most of the infrastructure in our province. And infrastructure costs have soared and soared in recent years. Our community will always see significant funding requirements for infrastructure. Our shift to OPP for police services continues to save Orangeville taxpayers millions of dollars each year, even as policing costs rise across Ontario, regardless of the service provider. I would like to acknowledge and thank our treasurer and CFO, Cheryl Braun, and her team for her leadership during this year's budget process and for the foundation she and her team built all year long. The investments in education, policy development, review, streamlining, and applying professional accounting practices were evident every step of the way. Clear direction and singular focus made this year's budget preparation the smoothest year I have ever participated in. The mayor should also be acknowledged for her trust and faith in council and staff. This is technically the mayor's budget. And knowing her as I have come to know her, I'm not surprised she's delegated the role to council and staff where she's able. Finally, I would like to thank council for its guidance and town staff for their dedication. Together, we will keep Orangeville affordable in a state of good repair and ready for what is next. By planning responsibly and investing wisely, we will honor our historic charm while pursuing a dynamic future for Orangeville. Thank you.
Thank you very much, CAO Smith. Ms. Braun, I'd like to invite you up. Thank you very much to you and your team for all the hard work that's gone into this. And you've come to the day where you get to present it all. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Post. Council and members of the community, on behalf of the mayor, who has delegated her authority to CAO Smith and I to develop the 2026 budget on her behalf, I'm pleased to formally table the proposed 2026 Town of Orangeville budget this evening. No decisions need to be made today. The purpose of tonight is to share a high-level overview of the tabled 2026 budget. Next week, we will dig deeper into the details of the capital program on December 9th. And on December 10th, we will be reviewing the operating budget in greater detail and concluding that meeting, hopefully, with final budget adoption. You are welcome to ask questions of clarification as they occur to you. But there are slide numbers on every content slide for reference should you choose to hold your questions until we reach the end of this presentation. The agenda for tonight is actually just a review of the budget schedule and a little bit of background on budget development. Then we will be going through some of the higher-level details of the 2026 operating budget. There's a couple of slides on some of our external agencies and boards. And then we'll be getting into some of the overall impacts of the 10-year capital program. And then finally, closing it out with some summaries of property tax and user rate impacts, and then next steps. So first, with the budget schedule and background. So the budget process started back in the late spring with staff working on plans and assumptions up until the early part of September. Then, for the majority of September, finance staff worked on refining budget estimates and determining a funding plan for the proposed capital program. In October and November, there were further reviews and discussions corporately to finalize the budget, which is being tabled today. We were to have received OPP billing information by the end of November. However, as of about 7:44 this evening, we haven't received anything yet from the Minister of the Solicitor General on our billing costs for 2026. But in terms of today, I'll be delivering an overview of the town's budget as it is tabled. And next week, we will, again, dive deeper into the various aspects of the consolidated budget. Approving the budget before a new year begins is considered best practice. It ensures that staff can start delivering on council's priorities right away as soon as the year starts. The mayor has already gone through some of the strong mayor power details. But under these strong mayor powers, the mayor must present proposed budget by February 1st of each budget year. To meet this requirement, the mayor did direct staff to prepare a budget on her behalf. But we do know that the legislative timelines, as prescribed under the strong mayor legislation, do not align with best practices of achieving a budget adoption before the year begins. So last August, you'll recall, we did bring a staff report forward to pass a resolution to shorten some of those budget process timelines that were required under strong mayors. Maybe I'll just move on from this slide because I'm hoping that it won't really make much difference to the process here in Orangeville. This is a little bit of a slide of what a budget really is, a municipal budget. So it is a financial plan with estimates for all expenditures and non-tax revenues and resources needed to deliver council-approved levels of service over a specified period of time. And the goal of any budget process is actually to communicate community needs and priorities and help decision-makers make informed choices on the provision of services and capital investments. And lastly, a good municipal budget process does allow for public input all throughout the budget deliberation period before it is adopted by council. The outcomes of a budget are basically the amount of funding required to deliver the services our community expects. This includes provisions for inflation and any changes to service levels that are approved by council, minus any other non-tax and user rate revenue sources. So what you're left with is really the property tax requirement, which is called the levy, or user rate requirement, which is called, you know, water and wastewater rates. The structure of the budget is actually in two major buckets, I'll say. The operating budget includes all your day-to-day costs and revenues required to deliver town services, including staffing costs, fuels, utilities, maintenance and repair costs, and service contracts, such as the OPP-delivered policing. The one-year capital budget and nine-year capital forecast represent a 10-year planning horizon of investments in town infrastructure needed to deliver town services and grow our community. So the combination of these two components is the consolidated budget. And there is a direct relationship between the capital program and the operating budget. While the capital program focuses on investments in infrastructure, when new assets come online, there will be operating costs associated with using those assets and maintaining those assets. And we put those into the operating budget. So for example, if we add a lane kilometer of roadway or more trails, we'll have to add more in terms of maintenance costs and winter control costs. And additionally, if a capital project is debt-financed, we'll have to add those associated debt servicing costs to the operating budget. Everything the town does is grounded in the strategic plan. The 2026 budget marks the last budget of this term of council. And the council-approved strategic plan provides guidance to staff in the development of annual service plans and budgets. There have been very few service level change requests for which offsetting budget reductions haven't been identified, and all new capital projects align with the town's strategic plan. This slide is sort of a graphic representation of some of the challenges we face with municipal budgeting. So there are three competing pressures, I would say, when you're putting a budget together. So if you want low taxes and you want more services, you're going to have to put up with more density. Or if you want more services and you want lower taxes, you're going to have to put up with higher, sorry, lower density, you're going to have to put up with higher taxes. And lastly, if you want low taxes and you want low density, you may have to entertain service cuts. We've added this slide for some additional context tonight. So when we're talking about tax impacts today, we are focusing on the tax impacts for the town portion of the property tax bill only. So that's that orange piece and the little purple wedge, which are the town services and police services. It's important to understand that there are two other components of the average residential bill, the county portion and the education portion. So we need to bear that in mind. It's not additive. So if, for example, the county were to table a 5% budget and we are tabling a 3% budget, you don't add those two numbers together. You have to do some math and do some weighted averaging on those two pieces to get the final increase to the total property tax bill. So just for the town's services tonight, we just keep in mind that the town's portion of the property tax bill is about 62%. And before we get too far into the conversation, we thought it would be helpful to provide some additional background on tax impact calculations. The table on this slide provides the levy equivalent of tax impacts of each 0.25 incremental change in the property tax levy. So a 1% tax impact is a little under 442,000. This is a helpful reference point. If we were to add or remove items to the budget, you would take the value of those items and divide it by 443,000 to get the tax impact in a percentage form. So for example, if we were to add 150,000 to the budget, for whatever reason, we'd divide 150,000 by the value of 1% or 442, 943, and we'd get a resulting tax impact of approximately 0.3%. Switching a little bit more over to the five-year trend in CPI versus property taxes. While the rate of CPI has slowed over the last, maybe 12 months or so, it's helpful to realize what's been happening over the past five years. During 2021 and 2022, CPI was in the range of 5% to 6%, while tax increases were quite low and hovered around 1%. We do acknowledge that the basket of goods in a municipal setting isn't linked necessarily to the household basket of goods that's used in the CPI calculation. But some of those inputs actually do impact our operating budget, such as multi-year service contracts that have those CPI escalation factors built into them. But I will note that contract renewals will always have a slight lag because they take the CPI historical data, and that is what's applied to the next year. So there's always at least a one-year budget cycle lag between CPI increases and contractual increases. The graph on the right shows the cumulative impact between CPI and tax increases. So from 2021 to year-to-date 2025, the cumulative CPI increase was about 18.5%. And the cumulative tax increase was about 13.5%. So this gap does continue to put pressure on operating budget inputs. Okay, so now, having provided some of the background and context to the process, we'd like to provide an overview of the 2026 Town of Orangeville budget being tabled today. The 2026 budget document is available on the agenda and on our Budget and Finances page of the town's website. So without further ado, let's start with operating. So this slide outlines many of the key budget pressures in the 2026 budget that we will be walking through today. So topping the list is inflation and capital cost escalation. Year-to-date CPI is actually above 2% as of October. And capital cost escalation is currently sitting at about 4.2% for Q3 2025. And this actually, sorry, capital cost escalation has actually increased by about 49% since the end of 2020. So it's been quite significant. And we're seeing that in the cost estimates of our capital program. Aging assets are nearing the end of their useful lives, and significant investments are required to renew and maintain these assets. External government funding is not keeping pace with inflation. And newer programs are becoming more application-based with ties to housing development rather than, sorry, resulting in lower funding certainty for the town. We are experiencing lower assessment growth. And assessment growth for 2026 is probably the lowest it's been in at least 10 years, at 0.17% estimated at this point in time. We will have final numbers on December 9th on assessment growth. And then policing costs. You'll recall the significant increases from 2025. Council did elect to phase those in over two years. So we'll have to pick up the second year of that phase in, as well as pick up any increase for 2026 that we have yet to find out about. In terms of a five-year trend analysis for assessment growth, this chart kind of gives both pictures, one in a table format and one in a graphical format. And as you can see, in at least the last five years, 2026 is quite low. 2023 was quite high. And that's actually driving that average over the past five years up above what we've actually experienced, which was more so in the 0.5% range. Okay, these two pie charts are taken directly from the 2026 budget document and show the proportionate share of total operating expenditure for each department, as well as how these expenditures are funded. So we can see that the majority of the town's $76 million budgeted operating expenditure relates to infrastructure services and community services, which account for 38% and 26% respectively, or a combined total of almost $50 million, about $48.6 million. Police services counts for another $6.7 million in expenditure or 9% of the total. And corporate allocations, which includes funding for our capital program, is another 13% or $10.2 million. Administrative oversight costs and council total approximately 3% of the total annual $76 million. And our centralized support services and corporate services accounts for the remaining 11% or 8.4 million. So of the proposed $76 million required to deliver town services for Orangeville, 60% of this is funded from the property tax levy. Another 21% is funded from water and wastewater rates and other user fees and charges. Provide another 7%. And grants and subsidies and recoveries fund 7%. And then investment income and dividend income offset our expenditures by about 4%. And rounding out the sources of funding is supplementary taxes and payments in lieu of taxes of around 1%, a little over 1%. We thought it would be helpful to show a continuity of budget pressures and offsets as they relate to levy impacts for 2026. During 2026 budget development, staff undertook a detailed line-by-line review of the operating budget and were able to identify almost $1.3 million in savings, of which approximately $627,000 was in the tax-supported budget for town services excluding police. This provided a levy reduction of almost 1.6%. The net of one-time items, which are reversals of previous one-time items and new adjustments, reduced the tax-supported budget by another $59,000. There are only two previously endorsed items for a community awards program, sorry, there was only one previously endorsed item for a community awards program that added $3,000 to the 2026 budget. The base budget has been adjusted by inflationary impacts on general operating expenses, including but not limited to insurance and commodity items such as fuel, natural gas and hydro, service contracts, cost of living increases for staff, and increased costs for benefits. There was temporary borrowing for Orangeville Police transition costs that will be repaid by the end of 2025, and we no longer need to provide for debt servicing costs in the operating budget for that item. Additional funding for Capital Works was identified in the 2025 budget projection for 2026. This provision is being maintained to combat capital cost escalation and ensure that there is adequate funding for asset renewal. A reminder that one of the outcomes of the 2025 update to the town's asset management plan was an identification of a significant funding gap of over $19 million annually. Non-tax revenues or user fees and charges were reviewed and increased by about 2% to 3% where appropriate. A staff report to update the user fees and charges bylaw for 2026 will be presented on December 8th with more details on what each individual increase will be. There are a couple of slides further on regarding service level changes, but in terms of the overall budget continuity, these changes net to a reduction to the levy of approximately The two highlighted lines in orange demonstrate one funding strategy for asset renewal. There is debt that retires in 2025, and for 2026, we no longer need to provide to service that debt to the tune of about $600,000. These savings are proposed to be redirected as contributions to capital reserves to preserve the funding capacity for capital, which we know is underfunded. And finally, we know that given many capital projects will need additional operating support as they come online. For 2026, there's additional costs for software licenses, operating costs for more fleet resources, additional utilities for pedestrian crossings, and incremental debt servicing costs for several new assets that are coming online in 2026. A total of $187,000 is needed to support these 2025 capital investments in 26 in the operating budget. So given all of these changes, the tax-supported budget increases for 2026 total a little under $1 million, which is about a 2.4% levy increase for town services excluding police. Staff reviewed budget estimates for revenues through the update of the consolidated user fees and charges bylaw for 26. Most fee increases have a January 1 effective date. For user fees and charges that are changing, most are proposed to increase by about 2% to 3%, and several new fees are being introduced in fire services and recreation. And again, this additional revenue anticipated from these increases has been incorporated into the 2026 budget estimates. On the water and wastewater side, rates are proposed to be increased for 2026 as contemplated in the 2024 user rate study. That study forecast rates increases that will be required over the next 10 years, given both operating and capital cost projections. The net combined impact for 2026 is an increase of about 7.9% for an average residential customer, which is the equivalent of an increase of approximately $94 annually on their account. For building services, slower development is creating some revenue risk as we aren't seeing as many building permits being pulled. There is a stabilization reserve that is already in negative territory, but the amount is actually relatively minor in the grander scheme of things, and the trend will reverse once development activity resumes. And then lastly, for cemeteries, staff have determined through benchmarking and the like, that a number of these fees could be increased by 5% to 10% and still remain in line with services in other jurisdictions. Talking a little bit about service levels that have staffing impacts, in reviewing the planned needs, staff looked into opportunities to repurpose positions to areas of higher need, and there were six positions identified that could be repurposed rather than added. As a result, there are a smaller number of requests for staffing in the 2026 budget with a net impact increase of a .1 FTE being requested for initiatives that provide support for fleet, library, and recreation. There are additionally some service level requests that do not have a staffing impact, and this slide highlights ones that have a budget impact of plus or minus $2,000. Investments in road-conditioned software, the storm water management program, development reviews, community improvement plan grants, all support the work of infrastructure services. In community services, there's a request to provide for encampment cleanup costs, adjust lease and concession revenues in various town facilities, and convert a corporate facilities technician to a 40-hour work week so that it aligns with other similar staffing resources. Corporate Services is looking to invest in new tools to streamline social media channels. And in administration and oversight, the Team Ambassador Group and Growing Orange are being enhanced to improve employee engagement and promote talent attraction and retention. Lastly, incremental investments in asset renewal are being leveraged from budget savings due to debt retirements. And I would just want to point out that a full list of service level changes can be found on pages 16 and 17 of the budget document. Now, we do have a couple of slides on some of our external boards and agencies, so part of the town's budget are set outside of our direct control. These include the contract with the Ontario Provincial Police, the town's share of the Credit Valley Conservation Authority, and then to maybe a lesser extent, but still it is governed by a board, the town's library budget. So first off, with the OPP contract, we've already mentioned this, that the Ministry of the Solicitor General is responsible for setting the OPP contract with participant municipalities, and there have been significant cost increases in both 2025 and 2026. And 2025, we are phasing in over two years. Back, I can't recall the exact timing, but the Ministry of the Solicitor General did indicate that the maximum increase for OPP subscribers would be about 11%. But since the Town of Orangeville's actual increase or cost isn't quite known at this time, staff proposed to include a one-time contribution from the Tax Stabilization Reserve to bring that impact down to about 5.5%, and hopefully the billing will come in around that range. And again, we were hoping to receive that information by now, so I could have given you a more definitive answer on that approach. As CIO Smith had alluded to earlier, the cost of OPP versus Orangeville Police Service is still much more beneficial to going with the OPP service. So I know we need to eventually move away from this comparison, but the history of policing costs since the transition of the OPP-delivered service suggests that the town is benefiting from transition. This slide provides a history of the OPP costs since 2021 and projects what costs would have been had the town had continued with its locally-delivered service, inflating those costs by the average OPP increases over the last six years. So we can see that during the transition years, there was maybe, I'll call it more of a marginal difference between the two delivery models, but we did see significant savings in 2024 and 2025 despite there being a 40% increase in the 2025 billing costs. And I should remind you that, or I should note that this does not include any of the one-time funding relief that was provided to us in 2025. This is the expenditure side of the equation. In terms of the Credit Valley Conservation Authority, funding models for conservation authorities look at actually several revenue sources. So the general operating revenue, it's actually kind of a shared service that benefits the whole watershed, and so it's apportioned accordingly. So when there's services such as flood forecasting, or base science, or corporate costs, the CVC follows the provincially-prescribed formula and assesses each participant municipality based on the property assessment that is within the jurisdiction that's in their watershed. On top of that, there is a special benefiting levy whereby certain project-specific items that are mainly benefiting one or a few municipalities, such as certain Capital Works, those are required by the benefiting municipalities only to pay their fair share. Additionally, CVC has fees and earned revenues such as planning and permitting fees, park admissions, education program fees, facility rentals, and service contracts with municipalities or utilities that they take into their budget to offset their total cost increases. And then in terms of grants and donations, they do receive some federal and provincial funding from other levels of government, as well as certain foundations and corporate sponsors maybe providing them with donations. And then there's also individuals donors that provide some funding for their capital In terms of the budget from the Credit Valley Conservation Authority, the levy in 2025 was $30.3 million. And so that, the, I have the wrong note here. In 2026, the Credit Valley Authority advised us that the increase would be in the range of 2%, so we've added 2% to our budget accordingly, and their levy will be about $347,000, $348,000. Quite recently, the province has announced plans to consolidate Ontario's conservation authorities from 36 down to seven regional bodies, and this will obviously impact the CVC's governance and budgeting. So we don't have full details on that, but once that's known, the CVZ would like to come and do their presentation in early 2026 to give us a better, clearer picture of what that's going to look like for them. But until that point, day-to-day services for the CVC will continue as usual. In terms of the library budget, so the library collaborated with town staff to bring forward a budget with a levy increase of a little under 1% for 2026, so that was a really good outcome. They did this by closely reviewing their fees and other sources of income, and staff found ways to boost their revenues by almost 24%. So that extra revenue helps to cover some of their increases in costs. Their increases in costs were about 2.7%, and also allows them to put a little bit more money away for capital investments that are needed in the future. So the library board has already approved the budget that has been included in the 2026 budget document being tabled today. Moving on to capital. The 2026 capital budget within the 10-year capital program totals approximately $64 million. So the pie chart on the left shows total expenditure by division, and we can see that fire services, with the new fire hall beginning construction shortly, accounts for 23% of the 2026 capital expenditure, about $14.7 million. Water and wastewater services combined account for a little under a third of the annual budget provision of about $17.5 million. Capital Works is a little over 20% or $13.6 million. Parks is just shy of $6 million and comes in at just under 10%. Transportation accounts for another 8% or just under $5 million, and the remaining eight divisions identified round out the last 12% of the pie with a combined total of $8 million. Funding for the capital program, so that's that pie chart on the right, only comes from a handful of revenue sources. So property tax levy in the form of reserves or debt funds about $33.4 million. User rate reserves and debt funds another $10.3 million. Development charges, another $10 million. And lastly, grants, subsidies, and other third-party recoveries provide the remaining $9.6 million in required funding. Similarly, for the 10-year capital program, areas with the largest capital investment are user rates, so that's water and wastewater, which are combined are about $96.7 million or about 30% of the total 10-year capital program. Capital Works, which accounts for approximately $91 million or 28% of the total. Fire Services, and largely because of that fire hall, totals about $32 million or about 10% of the total 10-year capital plan. Transportation contemplates another $27.6 million in 10-year investments or 9%. And then Public Works, Facilities, and Parks account for 6%, 5%, and 4% of the total 10-year expenditure respectively. And then the remaining seven divisions accounts for a little over $25.7 million or about 8%. And then similarly, the funding sources, and I've lost my mouse, wing it. Funding sources are property tax reserves and debt of $152.9 million, user rates and debt at almost $67 million. Development charges are planned to fund another $49 million, and the remaining bit, about $50 million, is grants, subsidies, and third-party recoveries. Having a few technical issues here. In order to be financially sustainable in the long run, particular attention should be paid to future debt levels. As it currently stands, the 10-year capital program contemplates issuances of debt totaling $47 million in the next five years. The graph on this slide shows corresponding levels of projected debt outstanding, so that's those big tall blue bars, and how this will lead to elevated debt servicing costs, which are the little flatter orange bars. The orange line across the graph indicates the projection of the town's annual debt repayment limit, which is prescribed by the province to be 25% of own-source revenues excluding development charges. So that's the upper limit, the maximum amount of debt that we can carry in our operating budget, so you compare that to the little orange bars. The little orange bars can't go above the orange line. The town is currently sitting at approximately 6%, and this limit is projected to climb to up over 9% over the next five years. This level is still well below the 25% limit as legislated by the province, but it is creeping up to our newly-adopted 12% internal guideline under the long-term borrowing policy that was recently approved by council. Turning to reserves, this bar chart illustrates projected year-end balances for the town's reserves over the next 10 years. We've actually, it looks a little bit busy, but we've broken it out by the sources of funding for those reserve categories, and we can see that development charge reserves are of particular concern as these are projected to be in a deficit position over the next 10 years. This is a result of slower development resulting in lower collections. So to alleviate pressure on development charge reserves, we may need to pursue growth-related projects, we may need to pause those projects until there are sufficient collections to cover the costs, or potentially issue a little cover the costs, or potentially issue a little bit more growth-related debt, which, as we have seen in recent years, carries with it higher collection risks because we still have to pay the debt servicing costs even if we don't get the collections in the door. So broadly speaking, the trend seems to indicate higher levels of investment over the next four years, which is drawing down on our reserve balances overall. It should be noted that the trend seems to improve over the later years, but we also know that planning needs, planning needs are less identified the further out we go in the capital forecast, and as more projects are added, there will be more funding needed in the last maybe four or five years. Now we get to the summary of property tax and user rate impacts, how this impacts the residents. So starting off with the table tax-supported budget position, we've split the tax impacts for the town portion of the bill into two components, town services and policing services. For the town services, the property tax levy requirement is going up just under $1 million, or 2.4% on that levy. After accounting for assessment growth and taking into account that the town services are 89% of the town's portion of the property tax bill, the tax impact of town services is just under 2%. For policing services, the property tax levy is going up about $611,000, or 12.34% on their levy. After accounting for assessment growth and taking into account that policing services are about 11% of the town portion of the tax bill, the tax impact for policing services is another 3, sorry, no, 1.36%. So in total, the town's portion of the tax bill is going up approximately 3.35%. Switching gears to user rates, the town undertook a comprehensive user rate study in 2024 that projected what rate increases would need to be to make the water and wastewater systems financially sustainable, given projected costs over the next 10 years. The study identified a combined volumetric and flat rate monthly rate increase of approximately 7.8% for water and 8.1% for wastewater in 2026. The impact on the average residential utility bill is a little under $94 per year, or 8% combined. So for reference, we've provided a notional cost of water and wastewater services, which is about $3.50 per day for 2026. So I'm not sure if I should pause here, if there's any questions anybody has before we move on to next steps.
Was there any questions from members of council or comments at this point? You just need to get in queue. Deputy Mayor Taylor, go ahead.
Just very straightforward, and thank you very much. Great budget presentation. Was curious about the assessment itself, and you did a great job of explaining how the police affects it in a certain way, and different other divisions accept it in a certain way, and it comes up to an overall number. There was a commentary made before we started our budget about what the overall budget increase was in 2025, and those numbers, I think, were just simply added together as opposed to knowing what the full amount was, and I think it's appropriate to talk about it as it goes into this amount. So last year, Dufferin County was 4.21, and Orangeville was 4.99. Do you happen to know what the other inputs were, and I'm sure it's a takeaway, but could we know what the overall one was for 2025, including education? And then compare it to what, and I guess we can't compare the whole thing because we don't know all those amounts just yet, but do a little bit of an ABC exercise, because it's not simply eight. That's not how you do the math.
No. So through you, Mayor Post, yes, actually, I had planned for the December 10th presentation to include that information, to show how the math works on the 2025 property, average property tax bill, so we can definitely bring that back. And you had a second part to the question that I wanted to address.
Sorry, I just want to compare the two and see, like, what was 2025, and maybe there's a way to run a scenario of what potentially 2026 might be from a whole picture, because we always say, hey, we're going to pass this Orangeville budget, and aren't we great? But it doesn't actually say what happens to the rate pair as a whole, and I think it'd just be great to understand those two numbers.
So we can provide you with 25 for sure. Do you believe the county is not going to be passing their budget until January, so we may not have that information, but we can show how that works on the 25 bill? Yep. Yep.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Andrews, here next.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, Ms. Braun. Thank you so much for the presentation and all that are involved so far. I know that we still have much to discuss over the next week and a half. One item that caught my eye as I've gone through this document, and again, you referenced this on page, I think it was slide 18 or page 18, and I'm not sure what the secret sauce is, but you identified upon review of the 2026 budget, references made to the line-by-line reduction totaling approximately about $1.3 million, and that's kind of cobbling together department discussions and so on and so forth. I think my question is really asking, how was that processed? And I don't need to get into the whole dialogue, but I am curious on if there was a metrics that was defined from your department, or was it from the senior leadership team? Take a look at everything, line by line, cut this out? I'm just curious on how you came up with that amount, because it is an astounding exercise to go through, time-consuming, but to come up with those figures is really commendable.
So through you, Mayor Post, I'd have to give some kudos to my colleagues Rebecca Maderos and Shane Fady, who also helped. We did structure the budget process this year. We gave staff some additional tools with some maybe three-year spending history so that they could look at, have better visibility into where there might be opportunities to use budget capacity to either repurpose to another area of need, or, in this case, reduce and actually keep track of the savings that we were able to identify. And we've sort of restructured in finance to give each department their own kind of financial resource, so there's a single source, a support person that they can rely on and build those relationships with, and then they can spend the time and go through everything line by line.
Well, again, that's an excellent description of your process, and again, I think that not only council appreciates it, but I think the general public should also take note of that too as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Andrews. Deputy Mayor.
Just really quickly, I understand that this is more of a you talking and us listening, and so these are just light-level questions, but I do find the police loan not being renewed interesting. Like, when we did the contract initially, there was monies that were taken to pay out the service essentially, right? And that equaled X dollars. We're now paying that off at a quicker rate, which is great, than I had thought we were going to, because we're going to pay off the whole $700,000. But there's a rationale behind that, so we didn't account for it properly, and I just wanted to grasp that again, why we're doing it, because if we didn't need to pay it off this year, and again, I love paying things off, I don't enjoy the debt, but if we didn't need to pay that off at that amount, the 707, we could actually just spread it out a little bit longer and help us all from a rate, could we not? So I guess it's two questions, could we not, and what's the rationale that we have to pay it off early?
Ms. Braun? So, not having been here at the time, under the municipal act, municipalities can only borrow for capital projects. So at the time, I can't speak to why it was done that way. It was kind of structured as a line of credit loan, so I don't know that the intent was to keep it long-term. It does need to be paid off because municipalities can't carry debt for operating expenditures.
Thank you, Ms. Braun. Counselor Sherwood.
Yes, Your Worship, through you. Ms. Braun, fabulous presentation so far. Just want to get clarification, if you go to page 17 of your presentation, it mentions that the police expenditures is approximately 9% of our budget, but on page 33, it mentions that policing is 11% of our budget. Can you just clarify that for me? And the only reason I'm bringing this up is, if we go back to OPS days, policing cost was well in the 20% of our budget. So I like to point out to our citizens that it's less than half, but I kind of would like to know, is it the nine or is it the 11, and how does that justify?
So I'm wondering if it's maybe a function of the denominator, so on, I think it was page 17 you referenced, that is total operating expenditure, including water and wastewater, so user rates. And then when we're talking about the property tax levy, we don't talk about user rates in the property tax levy. I can take that back, though, and just confirm that that is the difference in the math?
So I would think then that the latter, that then it would be the 11%. If you're going on page 33, I would think then policing cost is 11% of the overall budget?
It's 11% of the property tax-supported budget.
Right. And that's the figure I'm needing clarification on. So thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, was there anything else for members of council? I'm not seeing anything there. And Counselor Stevens, I'm not sure if he's got his hand up or anything, I can't see him, so I'm assuming he doesn't, because Clerks isn't telling me anything. So I think we're good there. Ms. Braun, I'll turn it back to you if you've got one more slide that you wanted to go through, I think. Could you turn your mic on? There we go, perfect. There we go.
Yeah. So, yeah, so this slide just outlines the next steps, so the battling buttons. The council amendment period starts now and ends on December 10th. We will be coming back on December 9th to review the 10-year capital program in much more detail, and we'll have colleagues from the senior leadership team to help provide a little bit more context there. On December 10th, we'll be doing a deeper dive into our operating budget, and again, our GMs will help us with describing, giving more information on that. December 10th to the 15th, if required, is the mayor's veto period, and then December 16th, if required, there is a council override veto day. The Credit Valley, I keep wanting to say Grand River Conservation Authority, Credit Valley Conservation Authority presentation will be coming back in January, but we do note that, you know, if everything goes as planned, and no amendment or vetoes or anything need to occur, we could have a budget adoption on December 10th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Braun. With that, if there's no further comments from members of council, we do need a motion to receive the budget. Can I have a mover and a seconder for that, please? Counselor Prendergast and Counselor Andrews, all in favor? And that is carried. Under the staff reports portion, thank you, Ms. Braun, I think you're good. Under the staff report, there is a recommendation that report CPS 2025-86, which is the municipal budget regulation, be received, and that council adopt report CPS 2025-86 as required by Ontario Regulation 284-09. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor McIntosh and Counselor Sherwood, all in favor? And that is carried. For bylaws, there's a recommendation that the confirmatory bylaw for the special council meeting held today, December 1st, be read three times and finally passed. Can I have a mover and a seconder for that, please? Counselor Prendergast and Counselor Andrews, all in favor? And that is carried, and a motion to adjourn. Counselor McIntosh and Deputy Mayor, all in favor? And that is carried. Thanks for joining us this evening.